Living environment for persons residing voluntarily or by court placement, including without limitation correctional and post-correctional facilities. You're saying it's a facility that provides custodial care and treatment?
Yeah.
Is that the very first part of that?
Yes, um, that is what I'm saying, that it's in a protective living environment.
Yeah, that second sentence wouldn't necessarily apply with the sexual offenders or people with no intention to commit acts of violence. And this is treatment for drugs and alcohol and addictions.
Yeah, I, the breadth of that first sentence, though, I mean, it says including without limitation, so the fact that you don't have residential treatment facilities specifically in there, um, if it says it's providing custodial care, I mean, if they're providing custodial care and treatment in a protective living environment, um, then they're falling within that definition.
Jason Gary Agape. We fully understand that, let's just be candid.
Right.
One of the aspects that our board has often discussed is that nobody really wants us as a neighbor. The community as a whole wants individuals to come out of addiction, especially individuals who are coming into nine to 12 months' worth of counseling and rehabilitation, to come back into the community to be substance abuse free and then also be productive members of the society, law-abiding, tax-paying citizens who can build a life and help build our community. So, we know that we serve the community as a whole, but we also knew in this process that there would be neighborhood objections to, "We like you, but we don't want you near us." When we looked at this particular site, and we looked at many sites, honestly, we looked at many sites, we took that factor into account, and that's why we didn't make offers on some places that probably did fit our needs pretty well and might have been less expensive, honestly. But the reality is, is that we thought to ourselves, you know, this isn't, we're not near, you know, we're not near substantially large residential areas, we're adjacent to Woodbury County Jail, and the other neighbor is Mid-American, it was just commercial, industrial in nature, we're not putting ourselves, you know, surrounded by, you know, hundreds and hundreds of residential sites and things of that nature. We, there's very, if you look at the map of Sioux City and you kind of lay it out, there's not a lot of places that would accept this sort of a use. And so while I understand his, you know, I understand the heart of his client's objection, and I understand some of the legal aspects of it, but we're not in a situation where it's not a halfway house, it's not court-ordered. I think some of the language he's laying out and the examples are examples of how the language plays out practically, and we aren't any of those things. We're not a correctional facility, we're not a halfway house, court-ordered halfway house, we're none of those things. People may refer them to us, but ultimately, an individual can come and they have to choose to stay, and they'll be off-site. Later on in the treatment process, they'll be attending houses of worship on Sunday mornings. In the micro-business processes, we're rehabilitating, as they're going through the rehabilitation, they'll be learning work skills, they'll be going out in the community, onto job sites and things of that nature. So, they're not prisoners or anything, not anything close to that. And so while we understand the ejection, you know, it's new, it's unknown, that's a challenge, we need to find a place to serve the community because the community needs these services. We're well-served by, you know, organizations that do 30- and 60-day detox programs, but the stats continually show us the same thing. Long-term rehabilitation facilities like these produce really great outcomes for individuals trying to come out of substance abuse addictions. So, with that, I'll leave it unless you have any other questions or thoughts.
Did they, the length of the program was nine?
Nine to 12 months is what they're committing to.
Kind of like Hope Street, I think they can stay there for about 18 months even.
Yeah, no, there, it's all, it's a four-stage process, and each stage can last anywhere from three to four months as they progress through that process. And as they progress through the process comes greater responsibility, freedom, those sorts of things. But one of the big aspects of it is community involvement, and then also being able to work, and so that they can come out of the facility that they have job skills, that they can go out and market themselves in the community and be able to go out, rent a place and start building a new life. So, and like I said, committing to nine to 12 months is not a small commitment, you know, think about putting your life on hold for nine to 12 months, you're battling a pretty heavy addiction and we need to, you need some serious help, and we want to provide that.
How many, again, would you have?
So, it would be, if, at full capacity, it would be 60 individuals, so unlike the definitions for six to 10, we're talking about 60, up to 15 in each phase is what we could house based on the current design, that, based on the current parameters that we're working with, with Lee over, Lee Buchelman over at CNBA Architects, we're putting together, trying to put together the site plan, and we've done, we're starting to do facility studies to see what we'd need to build in order for that to take place. But that's what we're looking at, is up to 60 men, we would be full. Future expansion phases would be for a women's facility and then also for a teens' facility over the long term, but the first phase is men-only.
There's no question your mission's honorable because we do need that in this community for sure, and to be successful, you're exactly right, can't just be a week-long, we'll take you for a week and turn you loose and good luck, you know? But I'm just wondering, Wade, if there's a, if there is a more accurate zoning classification. And to be honest with Mr. Voss, and he's done his homework, I'm just thinking, is there something to make this work that would be a better zoning classification?
Chris Mahzen, Planner. We did look at the different zones and which would make the most sense, that's why we chose public institutional. The code has, as you've already seen, multiple uses that are very similar. Protective care is limited to eight, transitional service is actually 10 or more, which may be a better use. There's multiple different uses, the PI would allow for a broader spectrum of those uses. So until we see a site plan, know exactly how many units and what the conditions are on those different uses, we may not know exactly which one to choose, but the PI would allow a broader spectrum of those uses to be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that Mr. Voss made it clear that they'd rather it just not be there, so I'm not sure if we found a different zoning code, it would make a difference. Their feelings, I think, would stay the same, that they don't care to have the facility in their area, so.
Regardless of zoning.
Right.
And I guess I really would resonate with, you know, what Jason said, is I think that serving on the city council has continually reminded me of my strengths and my weaknesses, and one of my weaknesses is just an inability to fully grasp sometimes code and some of these finer details, and so I definitely rely on staff input. You all are the experts, you work through this, as well as legal, as well as people that deal with this every day, and but one of the strengths that I hope that I bring to this council is kind of a vision for needs in our community and opportunity where it's available. And I agree wholeheartedly with you, Jason, is that I think there are always going to be those arguments against different facilities or locations of them, I can give you examples throughout our community currently. However, thinking about what this would be and its proposed location, I think is probably about the best opportunity that we could have ever dreamt up because of its proximity to the jail. I think you're going to have people that it's like, hey, here's a stop before you get to jail, or now that you've been there and sobered up perhaps, I think this might be a better option for you. And so while I can greatly appreciate your client's cause, I do, I understand where you're coming from and the job that you were sent here to do, I very much so would agree with Councilmember Shaner, is that I think from maybe their argument standpoint, it's going to be a lose-lose. We just have to determine what is going to be the best use and forge ahead with something that we feel is valuable to the community. And so that's where I would defer to Wade and your staff. It sounds as if, and I mean, geez, Mr. Gary is no schmuck when it comes to these zoning things himself, he says, oh, he worked with staff and Jeff, but he's done a lot with P&amp;Z, so I trust all of your judgment in putting this together and appreciate the time that you put into it.
There will be a site plan that'll come back, so.
Correct, yeah.
So we'll be able to see the.
You'll be able to see that.
Positioning of the buildings, et cetera, and I suspect they won't be right against the road.
And we can give feedback, and I think your client can, hopefully then we can work together and find common ground there too, to maybe create that buffer space or at least make people feel as comfortable as possible to provide that much-needed service.
I don't disagree with you, but the public hearing purpose of sorting out the issues that have been out, I like to get them answered. Wade, you've done a good job of doing that for us, and I appreciate that.
Totally.
They're raised, and Jason is smarter than anybody, we want to address them.
I think the underlying issue here is there's a stigma associated with seeking help for mental health and for substance abuse. I believe in the cause firmly, I have nothing but sympathy for your client because, I mean, frankly, they got the news that there's a jail built right across the street, now they're getting the news that there's going to be a treatment facility right next door. And so, and I, as a teacher, as a virtual teacher for Vibe before we got involuntarily transferred, had a student at that trailer park trying to focus on their homework, and their whole house would just vibrate and everything would shake because of the construction at the jail, so I understand that that's not something easy to live through. I think he's raised some very serious concerns. That being said, I wholeheartedly believe in the mission, and I think that we need this. We need that go-between. If somebody gets out of jail and they're still struggling with substance abuse, we need somewhere for them to go. And our community is not equipped for the amount of people that potentially will be in this jail. We don't have enough places, enough treatment facilities for them to go to, so that's a very real concern. That being said, I have to believe that there's a better balance we can strike with the zoning, or whether that is, if we can see a site plan before we can approve zoning, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with the zoning as proposed with some of the very real concerns that I feel like he's brought up.
Need to vote? See what votes that.
The hearing is closed.
It passes three to one, nay, vote for O'Kane, and I'm abstaining because of a conflict of interest. Does anybody want to waive the rules or not waive the rules, you have that option?
I don't mind waiving it, but.
Yeah, I don't mind waiving and moving forward, but it would be Matthew.
Okay with it.
You're okay with it? Well, go ahead and make a motion then.
I would make a motion to waive the rules, for second and third.
Second.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Stay in conflict of interest. Somebody want to move second and third?
Move second and third.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Stay in conflict of interest.
Waters.
Aye.
Just so we establish the rules, when we get sued on this and you have, we have to call Mr. Hanson as an expert witness, you are paying that bill, not the city, so we have that down, so. All right, good luck with your project.
Thank you a lot, guys.
Sixteen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning 2800, Gordon Drive, P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard, the public hearing is now open. The petitioner wasn't shown on the agenda, but it's LJB Assets, correct? Is the petition?
Yes, the petition is.
Well, I mean, they left that off, I just want to know that. What'd you say, I'm sorry, Mr. Nelson?
LJB Assets.
In the agenda item itself?
In the RCA, it contains.
No, I got it, that's why I'm saying it's LJB Assets, but it wasn't in the agenda item, I thought we listed who the.
Oh, in the heading.
In the heading, yeah, we list the petitioner. That's all I'm saying.
LJB S Assets.
If you look just at our agenda, you wouldn't know who the petitioner is, you'd have to go in deeper, that's all I'm saying, because you typically always show the petitioner. Like in 15, the petitioner's showing. Any question, anybody to be heard, the hearing's open. Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Passes five zero, is anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that. Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Seventeen's a hearing and ordinance vacating various rights of way and repealing ordinance 2023-1113, petitioner Mike Phelps, P&amp;Z recommends partial approval, I'll move that. Second.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Seventeen's a hearing and ordinance vacating various rights of way and repealing ordinance 2023-1113, petitioner Mike Phelps, P&amp;Z recommends partial approval, I'll move that. Second. Hearing's now open, anyone to be heard. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five zero, is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Move it. Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Move second and third. Second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Eighteen's a hearing and ordinance amending chapter 25-05 side development, P&amp;Z recommends approval, I'll move that. Second. Public hearing is now open.
We have a quick PowerPoint presentation to go through, just to kind of give you an overview of what we looked at on this, on June 5th of 2023, a moratorium was placed on all off-premise signs or billboards within the community. We used that time to review what other communities are doing, what their code says, we got input from various different sign companies looking to place billboards in town. Planning zoning commission reviewed on October 24th, November 28th, and December 12th. December 12th didn't make the recommendation that's in front of you today. And on December 18th, the city council did extend the moratorium that was put in place until March 31st, 2024, to give you time to review the proposed changes and possibly direct staff to make any alterations or further research as necessary. Our goals, we set out, again, consider the growth and expansion of the city, the rules were put in place a number of years ago, so our city limits have changed, we wanted to address that. Again, research what other cities' requirements were, review separation requirements and address sign clutter, consider changes in the industry. Our current code had no regulations regarding digital signs, so we definitely wanted to bring that into our code. Currently, there's 136 billboards or off-premise signs within the community with 278 different sign faces. We currently have four digital signs, and four digital signs were permitted immediately prior to the moratorium going into effect. And there's one that is still outstanding that's being reviewed. Four digital sign faces, such as the one located here, there's three faces on that sign, one of them is a digital sign face. Our separation requirements, our current requirement is 200 feet between off-premise signs, we are definitely on the low end of that requirement when comparing to other cities. We are recommending 600 feet during our conversation with planning zoning that did change between 1,000 and 600. With input from the sign companies and planning zoning, we did change that to 600 feet, and that's what is in the ordinance in front of you, and that would apply to both static and digital. And then just a comparison of where the other cities are at, somewhat high-end and low-end, all the cities with an asterisk do have a cap and replace, so any new billboard being located within those communities, one or up to three would have to be removed, depending on what their city code requires. And that is not something that we are proposing, we just wanted to show that in relation to the separation requirements. We wanted to update the sign-free corridors, extend the scenic byway to the southern city limits that currently ends about midway south, about in the Sergeant Bluff area, we did extend that to the southern city limits in South Bridge. We wanted to recognize our growing areas such as Outer Drive, the bypass, areas that are probably going to change zoning over time, currently would not be allowed, but once that zoning changes, they would be, so we wanted to include those in the sign-free corridors. And we used the language that Verde brought forward to us during the planning and zoning commission meeting, they wanted that reworded so it was a little bit clearer in the code. We did review that and we incorporated that within the proposed changes.
That would be the catch on their part.
Yep. So this map shows those areas, so what is in red is the existing sign-free corridors, and what is in green are the extensions that are being proposed. And obviously, if there's future annexations in certain parts of town, those would extend as well. And then the scenic byway, again, red is where it's existing within the community, and green going to the southern city limits is what is being proposed.
So would go back to that, you're talking sign-free from Harbor Drive all the way to Port Neal Road in the future?
Correct. Just within 600 feet of the interstate.
What's that?
Within 600 feet of the interstate.
So the signs that are right north of Sergeant Bluff, that always, there's like six of them, they're all going to go away? Is that what I'm reading here?
No, any sign that's currently in that area would be non-conforming, so that they would still be allowed to stay.
Exactly. But once they lose, once they lose one, you're not going to let them rebuild.
If it's north of Sergeant Bluff, that's already located within the sign-free corridor, this would be south of the airport interchange to the city limits line.
I know where the mayor's talking about, it's on the east side of the road, it's, isn't that the one with all the casinos, is a Blackbird, casinos that has like five in a row or something?
Those would all currently be within that area.
So those are allowed?
They're allowed to remain, they're currently within.
And you, and they can't replace them with digital?
Correct.
I'm not a big sign guy, but we have all, I'll just shut up and vote, no, go ahead.
I would like to hear that.
Well, we spent a lot of time on this, number one, and number two, we have all kinds of other sign problems in this community we don't want to address. I give an example, I won't say the name of the business, truck trailers sit there for seven, eight years with the name of the business painted on it, we don't call that a billboard. Well, what the heck is it? We don't enforce it. And then somehow, we somehow hate outdoor sign companies around here, and don't say we don't because we do. We've been trying to get rid of signs in this community for a long time, and it's part of commerce, I'm sorry, but I don't find them as offensive, I find them when I go to another community as a way to find direction to businesses.
I don't find them offensive either, I don't think that we have too many personally, I think I stated that in the meetings that we've had about it.
My concern is, like, the ones around, along 29, they advertise legitimate businesses that are downtown, and if they fall down and they're not able to replace them, then they're just going to keep using them until they fall down, and then that just reflects poorly on the community because they're, you know, not, don't look very structurally safe or anything.
They haven't spent no money on those signs because they knew if they took them down, they couldn't put them up, right? When they blew over, they had to get rid of them, and they had some blow over in a storm a few years ago.
Right.
So the digital sign on Hamilton, is that included in the count?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's in the sign-free corridor now too, right?
Hamilton is not a sign-free corridor, nor are we proposing it.
Can you go back to the previous?
This area.
Oh, just that.
19th Street north would be.
So, between West Third and West 19th is not red, not supposed to be red?
Correct.
Okay. I was kind of hard to tell, sorry.
And the thought with sign-free corridor, I mean, is it just more, or, obviously, I do understand the scenic byway aspect of it, you know what I mean, you don't want to take away necessarily from that. The one that I'm thinking about would be, say, as you're driving north on 29 and you're coming up on the Expo, you know, we have those different ones that are advertising, like right now, I think it's the Explorer Sioux City CVB one, those are all along that corridor that as soon as they're gone, they're not replaced, correct?
Correct. And I would elaborate, the scenic byway is also a state requirement, so it's not just a city requirement, the state also would have to approve and review any billboards in that area. My understanding is the one that was removed recently because of wind was actually denied by the state to be replaced.
Hmm.
Before it even came to the city to request replacement.
Yeah, because I wonder what their, yeah, what, how they've been ruling on those, you know what I mean, if it's along an interstate like that, if they've been allowing those or really trying to, not get, I feel like get rid of is an aggressive thing, but just curb the reimplementation of them.
Which former first lady did you say was against billboards, Mayor?
What?
Which former first lady did you say?
Lady Bird Johnson.
Lady Bird Johnson, that's right.
Tells you how young you are and how old I am. So you're telling me by Port Neal, the state wouldn't allow them to build one anyway, but yet we're making it a sign-free? If the state won't let them build, what do we care?
It's an area that we identified for future growth, that we wanted to extend that corridor.
The question was, if the state won't allow one.
Why do we need it?
Why do we need it?
And that's just so we're in line with their code essentially, or just so we're.
The last time I checked with Governor Reynolds, he's got more power than we do. So if the state says you can't build, then.
Okay. Digital display, our code currently does not address digital displays in our off-premise sign section of the ordinance, and again, we anticipate the growth in use of digital signs, we wanted to incorporate that into the code. We incorporated the DOT's requirements of what they would require on, within the distance of the interstate, so that's currently enforced in that area. We've also had some conversation with the sign companies that the digital billboards in Sioux City already meet these requirements for timing, how long they have to be on a static display, how quickly they have to transition, so we felt like that was the best recommendation for that, to essentially meet what's already being done in the community, but wanted to make sure that's what continues in the future.
What's that requirement?
Eight seconds, static message, and then one second to transition between.
But school, school buildings and churches don't have to comply with that?
Correct, that's only for off-premise. On-premise would be four seconds, static, and.
That's my problem, we have a different set of standards. That's where I get hung up on signs that, I mean, you go by North High in the morning, it's about three or four seconds, and unfortunately, you pay way too much attention to that sign because it's not up long enough to see it than you do driving.
Some of us.
Well, you know what, Alex, a lot of people pay attention.
I'm kidding, Eric, I'm kidding.
And, you know, we don't, this digital thing, I realize is new, I like a digital sign a whole lot better because it's clean than I do a tarp thrown over a board that blows in the wind sometimes and.
Or gets faded.
Well, I mean, it's the truth.
It gets faded a little easier.
These are, these are a lot cleaner-looking sign. Go ahead, I'm not going to vote for it anyway, so I'm going to shut up the rest of the day.
Just some additional changes, we removed the primary highway signage section of the code that's somewhat of a carryover from our last ordinance, and somewhat, it didn't necessarily conflict with our other sections, we wanted to make sure everything was in the same location, so most of that section was removed. Free-standing signs, again, we put in the four-second static message minimum, we wanted that to be a smaller number because the signs are smaller. We incorporated the digital sign language as part of that, reduced the timing.
On that, for one second, the four-second static, does any of this, so how long the message is up, is there any, any piece of the ordinance that ties into the speed of the street, or is there any way to tie it into the speed of the street? Because I feel like that would solve a lot. If I'm going 30 miles or 45 miles down the street versus I'm in a school zone doing 20, there's going to be a big difference in how long it takes you to read something.
Definitely something that we could look at, that's something the council, we haven't looked at that previously, but looking at it from an enforcement and just a permitting issue, that would be a little bit more difficult, but we can definitely look at that if the council wants to give us that direction.
And I'm not up to snuff with my knowledge of digital signs, but do they have the ability to set that delayed whatever they want with it?
Yes, they do.
So would there be any harm in tying the two together and settling on a number that's on the safer end of things?
They have it set pretty short.
Correct, yeah, they could set that, again, I mean, I may have the, have the sign companies address how easy that would be on their side, I know from our side it'd be more of the enforcement and permitting issue, but it's definitely something we could look at.
But you probably would have seen something like that in your research of looking at other communities.
I didn't see any other city that reviewed it that way, typically it was more of a static number, or they didn't address for on-premise signs.
Yeah, and what was that static number in most cases?
Three to four seconds was. Three to four seconds was the normal for on-premise. But we wanted to go more towards the higher end of that, so we chose the four seconds.
That, I, I'm kind of in the same boat in that my, my wife, my mother-in-law lives in, in South Sioux City. It's no, no mystery here.
Can't help that. Someday you can.
I took the best thing out of Nebraska, and I buy that. And, and whenever we go to see her, we, we go down Dakota Avenue, and there's a business that has a flashing light right in the front of it. It's a firearms dealer, I believe. And it is just the most terrible, obtrusively thing to drive past ever. Every time I go past it, I, I think that there's a police officer behind me. I always look. I, I even warn myself I'm going to be driving past it. So I, I can understand that if we have static messages changing very often, how distracting that can be. So that, I guess that would be kind of my concern is, is how often that message is able to be changed.
That's the concern now, because our code just says no flashing, but the interpretation can always differ on that. What is flashing, how long? So that's why we want to have a number associated.
So it doesn't appear to be strobe-like type, right, which can cause problems?
But your argument is that, well, is two seconds flashing? So you're trying to standardize this and say, look, four seconds is not flashing. I appreciate that.
Mayor, remember our generation when we took drivers ed and they told you how many seconds you have to check your rear viewer, rear view mirror? It was like, what, three, every four seconds you're supposed to check the mirror? I just go by whether there are any red lights behind me. Remember that? And then you've got these digital signs in school zones that Matthew mentioned. I'm usually looking for kids darting from between cars, not looking at signs, because I have a great fear of one of those kids coming out, but.
We also added a bonus for corner signs. So site that has allowed two signs, if they choose to go with just one at the corner, they could have a bonus in sign area of twenty percent, completely optional requirement. Just looking at, one attempt to reduce sign clutter sites.
Don't, don't say clutter. That really speaks, that bothers me. That's, that's a negative connotation for an industry. We, we wouldn't say that about any other industry. Too many signs, whatever, but clutter's just not. Sets a tone about what we think about signs around here. And so can we please not use clutter? Because the second time I've seen it on your slides.
And the planning and zoning commission did request that we look at a couple of different items. One was the height of billboards. We seem to be very much in the normal of what other cities are requiring, so we did not request any changes. They wanted to know what the abandonment requirements were, if a sign is not being utilized anymore, how quickly would it have to be removed? Again, that's already in the code, thirty days. If the sign is not being used, it would be considered abandoned. And then on-premise signs that have off-premise messages, that's another item we wanted, the planning zoning wanted us to look at. That was an item that was not resolved at this time. Very likely, we would have to do an interpretation of our existing code. So we'll bring that back to the planning zoning commission for further review.
Chris, when you say it's not being used, do you mean it doesn't have an image on it, or?
Correct. Either it doesn't have an image, hasn't been updated in amount of time. One of our commissioners did ask if the message, say, is an event that is long past, you know, the event ended six months ago, would that be an abandoned sign? Typically, we would send a notice to the owner and let them know that, hey, we noticed the sign's not being used, we're going to consider it abandoned, you know, please update it.
And how much time?
Something with it. Thirty days.
That's your proposal is thirty days?
That's what's currently in the code.
Oh, okay.
Commission just wanted more direction on, or research on exactly what our code requirement was and what other cities were doing.
I got a question on premise. I know this will sound minute, but if, if you're going to look at this, every big truck stop loving pilot give you so much for gas or diesel, whether cash or not, is that a flashing sign? They change it because it's always cheaper if you're paying cash.
Currently, again, we don't have a definition, but they would have to meet that four-second requirement in the future.
Um, I did text my contact at Verde, and the digital signs are all set to change every seven seconds.
So then we just have to change to eight, if that's what they went with?
And you're proposing we go to eight?
Eight seconds, the same as what the DOT requires.
Gotcha. That'll be easy. And they can change that stuff, believe me. I just went through it with campaign and, like, flip of a switch, very, very simple, very quick.
I'm sure it's settings, yeah.
Yeah.
Gordon Drive Viaduct, this did come up when we requested that the moratorium be extended. Again, what we're looking at right now is construction to begin in two thousand and twenty-eight. The DOT does not regulate signage within a distance of the viaduct, just that the signs cannot be located within the right-of-way. Our understanding is the signs on the north side would remain, and the signs on the south side would have to be removed. It appears there's four signs, at least, that would have to be removed on the south side because of the DOT project.
And you wouldn't allow them to be rebuilt?
We did an analysis. What we could see is that two or three could be rebuilt.
And put on the door side or still on the south side? Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yep, all on the south side. So it depends on exactly where the right-of-way line is, what is going to be available in the future. What we could see is two or three would be allowed to be rebuilt.
Because then it would be the every six hundred or whatever to meet.
Correct, with those rules.
Do you remember how many are there now, Chris?
Four.
Four? Oh.
Each of those replacements could be digital.
Yeah.
All right.
There's a lot of unknowns there still, but that was what we could come up with our analysis. Our recommendation obviously be to approve the rules that are in front of you. Obviously, that would also repeal the interim sign ordinance upon that approval. Currently, that goes until March, but with approval of what is in front of you, that would repeal that moratorium. And we'll obviously continue to study really both on-premise and off-premise signage. If there's any other issues that the council wants us to look at, we're more than happy to look at that and bring forward any changes as necessary.
But you're only going to look at on-premise digital?
Anything that you want us to look at, we can continue.
I'm going by what your recommendation is. I'm, I'm just reading that. Am I reading it right?
Yes, we could look at on-premise digital. If you want us to look at more off-premise type requirements, we can do that as well. We didn't really look at on-digital, on-premise signs as part of this. We focused our attention on off-premise.
Chris, will we be able to get this published by Saturday? The ordinance, don't we publish it before it goes into effect?
Correct.
If all three readings pass today?
Yes, then the public debate will be Saturday.
That's why we put the moratorium to March thirty-third.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's why we have plenty of time. We can do first, second, and third. That way, if the mayor has concerns, which it sounds like he does, if he wants to propose any to city staff, at least then they can make, make necessary changes and adjustments.
Absolutely.
We can always extend the moratorium. Anyone to be heard?
David English, GM at Verde Outdoor, twenty-four twenty Correctionville Road. I, first, I, I was part of putting together an ordinance before moving here in Kansas City. I know it's very long and tedious and hard. And so kudos, compliments to the hard work to put in. I do appreciate the use of some of our ver- verbiage that we were concerned with. I appreciate the times that we were heard as far as putting this together. Obviously, when you go from one ordinance to another, obviously, there are concerns and there are, you know, items within any ordinance that a business like ours, especially when you're the only business in town, and you're the only company in town that this ordinance is really going to affect. There are concerns, but, you know, I'm not here to throw a big blanket over the whole thing. I, I know there are a lot of questions at this point. It might be, since there are other readings, it might be better if I answer some questions based on my industry knowledge. And maybe shine light on our perspective on those questions as well. And with that, I mean, I'll open it up and address any questions you guys may have, because, I mean, some of the questions that were brought up are legitimate concerns of ours, so.
What, what are some of those that you've heard brought up today that you could address or give your perspective on?
Yeah, I mean, the, the initial concern of, you know, a sign falling down and never being able to rebuild it, I mean, that directly affects revenue going forward for a number of years. I mean, traditionally, in markets I've worked in, that there's a percentage attached to that. Usually in the fifty to seventy-five percent range of a, of a sign's damage, it can be rebuilt if it's less than a certain percentage. I don't remember if there's a percentage in this ordinance or not, but if a sign falls over altogether, tough luck. I don't, I don't have a billboard anymore. But if it's damaged and it's work we can do to rebuild it, we at least have the opportunity to, to rebuild it.
Because an automobile or something could hit it, or?
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, yeah, I mean, automobile, I mean, if it's, if a lot of the, the wooden boards in town, a big windstorm comes through and damages it to the point of panels hanging off of it, or I'll, I'll spare you the specifics, but we can go out and fix that board in less than a day. And.
So you're saying assign, excuse me, assigning a percentage to say, I mean, similar to how you would total out a vehicle, right? Like, the expense of going into it, you would just say, look, if it's fifty percent or more damaged, you are going to have to take that down. But if it's something fifty percent or less, then we would look at, hey, you know, you can rebuild this and keep this operational.
Yes, sir. That's, I mean, it's, I've worked under those parameters for fifteen, twenty years, and it's.
And usually, do you, you and a member of, like, city staff or someone inspections go out to make that assessment or that judgment of percentage?
I've, we, we do have staff in-house, and their job and part of their deal is when a storm does come through, similar to what we're probably going to have tomorrow with high winds. Part of their deal is we're inspecting signs throughout our market to make sure there were no damage. The best thing we can do is partner with city to make sure that we're on a regular communicating basis. If there is something we've missed, we want the opportunity to go protect our asset. I think having a close relationship with the city is essential for an industry like mine, specifically when we, again, we're the only billboard company in town, and we have to be able to work with y'all. So the answer is twofold, yes.
And Chris, do you, do we have a percentage worked in right now, or is it kind of an all or nothing? What, where are we at?
I'd have to verify that it's not in the actual ordinance that's in front of you today, but I do believe that number is fifty percent for sign damage, the same as any other nonconforming structure. If it were to be damaged, it could be repaired if it's at or under fifty percent.
Okay.
Cost.
So it is in ours, it's just not before us right here?
Correct. We're not recommending any changes to that.
Great, great.
It's a dollar amount of perceived damage. So what, what, what would be the outcome if, let's say that there's, there's, there's a sign that has some significant damage that needs to be repaired? It, it hasn't reached that fifty percent threshold.